I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Ian and thank you everyone for coming. First item on the agenda is approval of the June 6 business session.
Motion approved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Continue your votes. Next up, approval of the bills list.
Motion's made, Bill.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Continue your votes. Next up, public comments. Anyone has comments, please come forward and name and address and we have two minutes.
You say name and address?
Yeah.
My name is Cassie Bradley, we live at 312 Main or Lane in Buckner. So I'm just moving with the recent water issues we're having and just a lot of people are concerned and having to pay a lot of money for damages. I know people paid fourteen hundred dollars to different people for water heaters, one had a seven thousand dollar expense for a new line for their house, another neighbor had their basement flooded, another person had her place in dishwasher, and all of them have been told they don't receive any help and yet every reason has been the water pressure issues being high and low or not consistent. So, well, we're saying this is an aging infrastructure and that's a problem that any city's gonna have, it's just been the new normal and I think a lot of us are concerned, we don't want that to be the new normal, so we're curious what kind of plans are in place for replacing that infrastructure, where does the money come from, is it there, what can we do to help? Just asking how it could be interesting, so is the city trying, is there any pushback, citizens come together to do anything to make a difference? So just basic concern motivated to state on behalf of people who couldn't be here that are having a lot of costs they really can't work out right now, and just any insight from you guys that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, I know that right now, the power, there's a number of valves, if you look over here, you can see kind of what I think was the original problem we had, if I understand this correctly. And those things are buried in the ground for, I think that was fifty plus years, like you said, things are aging. And it's kind of my belief, I don't have this as an expert opinion, but as we've replaced things, it's put stress on the next weak link and it's just caused a cascading failure that we're getting chased because we fixed this problem and it makes a new problem. And the hope is, as we fix the valve and power up here and get those other butterfly valves, as we get those adjusted, then it will give us greater control, I think it's something that, I mean, it doesn't do me any good to point backwards, but we probably should have done this twenty years ago, and this has just kind of let things compound, but there is plans we should have gotten, we've had studies done on which lines we should be looking at, not, pardon, which lines we should be looking at, and that is part of our mission going forward, we've looked at a lot on the side, unfortunately today, haven't had problems with around the sewer side, but we do know that right now we are under collecting on sewer rates and so water is subsidizing that, so we're having to evaluate, because I know this is a good crowd here tonight, but it's nothing like what we saw a few years ago when we looked at changing rates on water. And so, we want to make sure we get it right before we do anything on that front. But, yeah, there is a plan, and the plan has really been focusing on the sewer side, because I'm more worried that y'all are gonna have a morning when you flush and it doesn't go anywhere, or something's coming out of your basement drains, and so we're really, that wasn't fact that Department of National Resources is telling us that we've got to get our, I think it's ammonia levels and nitrate or something under control. So, we've been able to kind of get a pass on that so far, but there is going to be an issue going forward, so, yeah, we're aware and we're, you know, I don't think we could anticipate this when it all started, but, yes.
Are you gonna publish that?
I'm sorry.
Are you gonna publish the plan so we can all see the plan?
Is there financial help for people that are having like the seven thousand dollars? Like if that were our family, I don't know what we would do to come up with that, to have water in our house, like is there financial help for those families?
I don't think, I don't know of anything other than if you got insurance. But as I understand, I just want to make sure the city...
Yeah, I am Alex Valsey, the city attorney. The city has insurance for situations like this, we've already notified our insurer that there might be some claims coming, so if you'd like to contact City Hall, Joe, we can get you the insurer's information, and that would be the first place to go, would be to check the insurer, no matter what the situation is, when the city is alleged to have damaged someone of a citizen's property, the first thing you do is go to the insurer, so that's our first step before anything else can happen.
Can I ask one more question? I was notified that the guy who's out like working, doing all the physical labor is also supposed to be juggling, making sure everyone's notified, and I think a lot of us too, like friends with babies that weren't notified of the recent boil advisory, is there anything being done so that person's load is lightened so he's not trying to handle, or some more efficient way so we know we'll be notified of these issues by the texters?
I mean, this is kind of an all hands on deck situation, and so, I mean, I appreciate what Joe and JD and the crew has done, it's not a huge team, I mean, I think one of the things that, as I was talking about the water and sewer rates, is that Buckner is kind of a, like I said, from a low cost pound, kind of the labor is the one expense that just goes on and on, so trying to keep, I mean, if you look at your property taxes, Buckner probably gets less than a hundred dollars out of what you're paying, and so that doesn't go super far on payrolls, and we've also got, you know, the law enforcement, we have to have twenty-four seven, I believe that. So that's the, so, yeah, the short answer to your answer is, is not a lot, but the good news is, it doesn't happen a lot, it's been a bad two weeks course, two and a half weeks. Just second flip and then I'll continue this round. So, yeah, so to that end, yes, we do appreciate the work they're doing and we do know it's a burden, but I think in the near term, we're trying to get the problem fixed, was the big thing, and Miss Lynn?
So do I, am I not understanding that the plan is to keep fixing the problems as they cascade down the system, is that the, that's a legitimate plan?
No, the plan is, is to review the, what we got from the engineers and identify those areas that are most likely to be the next problem, but at this point, yes, if something breaks tomorrow, we're just gonna have to fix it, because it may or not, may or may not match up with the engineering study.
Okay, Gerald. Since this happened...
I'm sorry?
Since this happened, and you're saying that it's valves fault, that's not the first time one of those valves has blown, correct?
I'm sure it's not, I don't, I can't tell you when it was, but...
I know it's correct, and you and Jimmy know it's correct, the rest of it I'm not. So how come this has never happened before, when it started cascading and blowing and blowing and blowing and blowing and blowing?
Probably, I'm not an engineer, but my guess would be the same reason, when I was twenty years old, I could go out and fall down and not bounce right back up, and today I fall down and I need somebody to help me, it's just getting older and wore out, and...
Well, and here again, I'm gonna go back to you and Jimmy, you all thought, you guys were there when I was there, and we were starting to fix the sewer treatment, the sewer lines in town, phase one was done, the money was outpayed for phase two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Ian and thank you everyone for coming. First item on the agenda is approval of the June 6 business session.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Continue your votes. Next up, approval of the bills list.
Motion's made, Bill.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Continue your votes. Next up, public comments. Anyone has comments, please come forward and name and address and we have two minutes.
You say name and address?
Yeah.
My name is Cassie Bradley, we live at 312 Main or Lane in Buckner. So I'm just moving with the recent water issues we're having and just a lot of people are concerned and having to pay a lot of money for damages. I know people paid fourteen hundred dollars to different people for water heaters, one had a seven thousand dollar expense for a new line for their house, another neighbor had their basement flooded, another person had her place in dishwasher, and all of them have been told they don't receive any help and yet every reason has been the water pressure issues being high and low or not consistent. So, well, we're saying this is an aging infrastructure and that's a problem that any city's gonna have, it's just been the new normal, and I think a lot of us are concerned, we don't want that to be the new normal, so we're curious what kind of plans are in place for replacing that infrastructure, where does the money come from, is it there, what can we do to help? Just asking how it could be interesting, so is the city trying, is there any pushback, citizens come together to do anything to make a difference? So just basic concern motivated to state on behalf of people who couldn't be here that are having a lot of costs they really can't work out right now, and just any insight from you guys that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I know that right now, the power, there's a number of valves, if you look over here, you can see kind of what I think was the original problem we had, if I understand this correctly. And those things are buried in the ground for, I think that was fifty plus years, like you said, things are aging. And it's kind of my belief, I don't have this as an expert opinion, but as we've replaced things, it's put stress on the next weak link and it's just caused a cascading failure that we're getting chased because we fixed this problem and it makes a new problem. And the hope is, as we fix the valve and power up here and get those other butterfly valves, as we get those adjusted, then it will give us greater control, I think it's something that, I mean, it doesn't do me any good to point backwards, but we probably should have done this twenty years ago, and this has just kind of let things compound, but there is plans we should have gotten, we've had studies done on which lines we should be looking at, not, pardon, which lines we should be looking at, and that is part of our mission going forward, we've looked at a lot on the side, unfortunately today, haven't had problems with around the sewer side, but we do know that right now we are under collecting on sewer rates and so water is subsidizing that, so we're having to evaluate, because I know this is a good crowd here tonight, but it's nothing like what we saw a few years ago when we looked at changing rates on water. And so, we want to make sure we get it right before we do anything on that front. But, yeah, there is a plan, and the plan has really been focusing on the sewer side, because I'm more worried that y'all are gonna have a morning when you flush and it doesn't go anywhere, or something's coming out of your basement drains, and so we're really, that wasn't fact that Department of National Resources is telling us that we've got to get our, I think it's ammonia levels and nitrate or something under control. So, we've been able to kind of get a pass on that so far, but there is going to be an issue going forward, so, yeah, we're aware and we're, you know, I don't think we could anticipate this when it all started, but, yes.
Are you gonna publish that?
I'm sorry?
Are you gonna publish the plan so we can all see the plan?
Is there financial help for people that are having like the seven thousand dollars? Like if that were our family, I don't know what we would do to come up with that, to have water in our house, like is there financial help for those families?
I don't think, I don't know of anything other than if you got insurance. But as I understand, I just want to make sure the city...
Yeah, I am Alex Valsey, the city attorney. The city has insurance for situations like this, we've already notified our insurer that there might be some claims coming, so if you'd like to contact City Hall, Joe, we can get you the insurer's information, and that would be the first place to go, would be to check the insurer, no matter what the situation is, when the city is alleged to have damaged someone of a citizen's property, the first thing you do is go to the insurer, so that's our first step before anything else can happen.
Can I ask one more question? I was notified that the guy who's out like working, doing all the physical labor is also supposed to be juggling, making sure everyone's notified, and I think a lot of us too, like friends with babies that weren't notified of the recent boil advisory, is there anything being done so that person's load is lightened so he's not trying to handle, or some more efficient way so we know we'll be notified of these issues by the texters?
I mean, this is kind of an all hands on deck situation, and so, I mean, I appreciate what Joe and JD and the crew has done, it's not a huge team, I mean, I think one of the things that, as I was talking about the water and sewer rates, is that Buckner is kind of a, like I said, from a low cost pound, kind of the labor is the one expense that just goes on and on, so trying to keep, I mean, if you look at your property taxes, Buckner probably gets less than a hundred dollars out of what you're paying, and so that doesn't go super far on payrolls, and we've also got, you know, the law enforcement, we have to have twenty-four seven, I believe that. So that's the, so, yeah, the short answer to your answer is, is not a lot, but the good news is, it doesn't happen a lot, it's been a bad two weeks course, two and a half weeks. Just second flip and then I'll continue this round. So, yeah, so to that end, yes, I mean, we do appreciate the work they're doing and we do know it's a burden, but I think in the near term, we're trying to get the problem fixed, was the big thing, and Miss Lynn?
So do I, am I not understanding that the plan is to keep fixing the problems as they cascade down the system, is that the, that's a legitimate plan?
No, the plan is, is to review the, what we got from the engineers and identify those areas that are most likely to be the next problem, but at this point, yes, if something breaks tomorrow, we're just gonna have to fix it, because it may or not, may or may not match up with the engineering study.
Okay, Gerald. Since this happened...
I'm sorry?
Since this happened, and you're saying that it's valves fault, that's not the first time one of those valves has blown, correct?
I'm sure it's not, I don't, I can't tell you when it was, but...
I know it's correct, and you and Jimmy know it's correct, the rest of it I'm not. So how come this has never happened before, when it started cascading and blowing and blowing and blowing and blowing and blowing?
Probably, I'm not an engineer, but my guess would be the same reason, when I was twenty years old, I could go out and fall down and not bounce right back up, and today I fall down and I need somebody to help me, it's just getting older and wore out, and...
Well, and here again, I'm gonna go back to you and Jimmy, you all thought, you guys were there when I was there, and we were starting to fix the sewer treatment, the sewer lines in town, phase one was done, the money was outpayed for phase two, and it was appropriated and it was in the bank, but yet you never did it, and you would never explain why. I wasn't on the board then because I left, because I was put on twelve hour days. So, why didn't you continue on taking care of the infrastructure?
We're looking at it, well, on the sewer side, I can speak to that a little better because we have, we have everything worked up on that, and that's actually one of the reasons why we're looking at the rate study, is you're looking at at least one point six million dollars, which currently, the Water Sewer Fund has a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in it, we do have some ARPA money that we can put towards that, but again, in deference to making sure that our taxpayers, I don't want to burden them with thirty years worth of debt, that we take care of these things, kind of a pay as you go, and I think we can get there, but it's on the agenda, it's on this year's capital improvement budget.
And the point that I'm trying to make was ten years ago, when I was on that board with you two, and, and we were, we were going to do it, phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, you had the money appropriated for phase two, and it was in the bank, and that was over three hundred thousand dollars. To this day, I still don't know what happened to that three hundred thousand dollars.
And I've been sitting in this chair for four years, so I can't tell you, but...
But you were sitting on the board, just like Jim was back there.
So how can we find out if this, these raises were made at that time to prepare, to repair those things, and how do we find out where that money did go?
There was enough money coming in, because they had saved it, because we had done it a year before, phase one, and it was over three...
Regardless of all this stuff, wouldn't it be cheaper in the long run to just put new pipe in the ground and, you know, new main and new services, and just abandon the old system?
Well, if we had five million dollars, yes.
Right, but I'm saying, you know, in the long run, you said something about, you know, putting the community in debt for thirty years or whatever, I just wonder if those are the figures for keeping the current system and then fixing all of the problems as it goes, you know, I'm just curious if that was, if any kind of thought would take anybody or...
I mean, we'd like to say we commissioned an engineering study on that and have some opportunities to fix, but again, it's, this community is not, it's a flood with cash and things are expensive.
What year was it that those funds were allocated and not used?
Oh my goodness, I'm, I'm ready to go back, we'll pay the word, I've been on for ten years.
Is there any other time?
Is there a timeframe for the plan of being created or whatever, is there a timeframe that we're looking at for the plan being actually created, and then, you know, I know it's not created already, so you can't tell me any further than that, but is there...
We've primarily been focusing on the sewer side because of the regulatory compliance issue.
If there are any more public comments, can I please have you come up here, and you've got your two minutes, we can't have this devolved into a town hall, I understand everyone has questions, this is your time, and public comment is to come up here, and we're not gonna have answers to all your questions, but if you'd like to address the board, please stand up, come and say your name and your address, and then your two minutes will begin.
Do you want me to, even though I'm done?
No, we know we can do that.
I know you can.
I'm gonna jump up there. Elena Frederick, 503 Tarzany Lane, she was mentioning how we don't have notification of these boil orders in time, so we're all finding out on Facebook, that's it, so is there a good way that we can really, I mean, if we're not able to fix things and we're just waiting for them to keep falling, okay, we're waiting for them to, we're waiting to address them as they come, so can we figure out a good system that allows us to all be notified? We've heard it on the news and we've heard it on Facebook, but we are, and that's from the town, town chatter, not necessarily from the city, a few times I've seen the city post, but I think we really need some notifications going out to us so that we do know when we need to start boiling or, you know, kind of avoid our water.
I don't know the how, but I know it exists, the text caster, I don't know how you get signed up for it.
You go onto our website and you can sign up for text caster, which is a notification that says that I've sent out a message.
Okay, so we will just need to notify the public to sign up for text caster, because I didn't know that either.
The Tuesday, it didn't get shut down, so hasn't been very reliable.
Yeah, I feel like that's kind of one of the bigger frustrations at first, is no one even knows when we're, when we're in a mess, until our low water pressure and things like that, and then we don't know when we're out of the mess, because then a couple days later, it turns back into low water pressure and no water. So, yes, just if we could get a good notification system to kind of let us know what's happening.
As I said, it's a place you can go and sign up for text caster, I put out every time it goes on.
Okay.
A long time...
I'll say that, it works great.
Yeah.
Everybody should have access to it.
A lot of times, when this, this happens, we don't know until it happens, I mean, JD woke up, you know, got hit at midnight last night because the water tower was overflowing, you know, so, I mean, it's at midnight.
Okay, so I'll look that up and I can get on that.
Yeah, if you go to cityandbuckner.org, on the main page, you'll see City and Buckner zoning map, and right below that, it says sign up for city notifications.
Okay.
And this link right here will take you to text caster to sign up, and you can pick a multiple thing, what you need.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Hello, here from Portico, 805 Homeland Street, just one thing, I had to get ahold of somebody regarding water pressure, I tried calling City Hall, Water Department, nobody answered, rang, 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 went to voicemail, voicemail's full, who do you contact?
We worked it after hours, ma'am.
Nope. So, like, if we have a water break on our street, who do we call? How do we get ahold of somebody? Like, these are things that, as citizens, we need to know.
JD's phone number, my phone, it was listed on the website.
I didn't see them, so I found your email, and I got your email, and that's how I got ahold of you, but otherwise...
Another time, we was out in the streets looking for breaks and all that, so we wasn't in the office.
Right.
Casey was, the number that goes straight to is Casey Davis, and she was absent, but we had another person in her place that was answering phones. And a lot of times, we can get the business signs, because they've been overloaded with phone calls already, we only got one line coming in, so she hasn't answered.
Right, but I mean, like, the voicemail's full too, you know, like, it's just, there's another communication issue, just so you guys are aware, you know, thank you.
Anything else? All right, moving on to committee reports, statement and findings, review of accounts, current total of all funds is one point five million, water sewer is at one twelve, so I know there'll be a conversation a little bit on some prepareds, so that... The street fund is two hundred and thirty-two thousand, and due, apologies to that, sorry. Park capital improvement is three eighty-one. Better substance is seven-six-hundred, and general fund is sixty-three thousand, fund twenty, the building, building fund is back up to fifty-one, and we made that extra principal payment, so continuing to move forward in decent shape, not very... Next up, public health and safety.
Just got our totals for the month, forty-two summons were issued, forty were police reports, ten more to rest, six ordinance summons, and we presented three felony cases to the state prosecutor, and then, I may have missed it earlier, but shortly after the last meeting, our drug dog certified is on the street now too.
Cool. Anything else?
That's all we have.
Thank you, sir. Park board?
All I've got is, Spray Park is almost done, we're really pushing to get it done by fireworks, and we're just getting ready for fireworks in the park on the twenty-ninth.
Get the hook on the bathroom and the...
Oh, yeah.
Boom in and all that.
Yep, it's coming together pretty well.
Control panel was put in today, water line went in today, the water to the building will be extended tomorrow, Saturday, there's gonna be water spraying out of ground.
Unfortunately, that's been...
The toilet, we're gonna... Yeah, we're gonna shut down the whole town to spray water in the park. I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. It's going really good, Saturday, we're gonna be purging lines and getting ready to set the features on top of the mounting pads.
I'm excited to see the finished products, you got them done, nice job.
Awesome. There's no dip.
Yes, job, being done on cash basis, nice job. Planning and zoning.
No before.
Public Works, obviously you've been keeping busy there.
Yes, very busy, I, we got two new guys that are, joined me finally, and we're trying to get them trained and everything and get them squared away, yeah, we've been busy.
That doesn't let fire, does it?
Yeah.
Bears and vessels, I see Leslie, right?
What does Public Works pay their employees per hour instead of your office? At least sixteen, sixteen-fifty now.
Oh, I'm not making reference to festival. Okay, Mr. Rob.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda, if we can make it number four, new business. Uh, if we can make it number four, new business, uh, to discuss canceling the July fourth meeting.
Is there a second?
We might have other stuff to do that day.
Call in favor of amending the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, first item on old business discussion consideration and action regarding the spray park.
Park Joe.
Huh?
What do you want to discuss on it? Just on where we're at on it? Yeah, yeah. That's basically, we just got through going over it there a minute ago, but things are on schedule, looking really good to have, have things go in the right direction. So, uh, we really, uh, next Thursday is when we would like to have all of you guys come out, if you're available, Thursday afternoon. That's gonna be the soft opening, not for the kids to play, but to go through and show everybody how it works and how the sequent worked, sequence works, and just kind of go over what is going on in the park with the spray park. And the public's welcome to be there, but it's, and there's gonna, I'm sure there'll be some kids playing a little bit, but it's more to, to explain to everybody and see how it works and what's going on down there.
What time to?
I, I'm thinking like between six and seven, you know, something like this meeting, that way people can get home from work and have plenty of time to come down. It's an informal thing, but I think it would be cool to do that and let everybody see it.
What was his date on that?
I'm sorry, it'll be next Thursday. Yeah, the twenty-seventh.
In Tuesday, the Oxy representative will be here from Texas. He will show us how to run the control panel and how to, um, set it all up.
How to program, and it will have different sequences to where we can make, you know, three items come on at a time or multiple items at a time, whatever, you know, and he's gonna show us how to do that and give us a little bit of training on that.
How many, uh, water main breaks have you had so far?
Uh, we've moved on to public comments, thank you. Next up, Mr. Bosley, would you like to do the reading of bill number twenty-four oh four?
Sure. Bill number twenty-four dash oh four, ordinance number ten ninety-one, and ordinance of the Board of Aldermen in the City of Buckner, Missouri, amending section one three zero dot one five five of the City of Buckner, Missouri municipal code.
Take a motion to suspend the rule.
So, uh, second.
Call in favor, suspend it.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading.
Bill number twenty-four dash oh four, ordinance number ten ninety-one, and ordinance of the City of the Board of Aldermen in the City of Buckner, Missouri, amending section one three zero dot one five five of the City of Buckner, Missouri municipal code. And the change here is to change it from ten percent to twenty percent for the monthly withdrawals or transfers to the park board operating fund. It's important to note that this is a not to exceed twenty percent, so if a certain month was light, the board could say we only need seventeen percent or sixteen percent. It basically just puts a cap on what they can transfer, what they, with the Board of Aldermen, can transfer from the capital improvements fund to the operations fund.
May I approve?
Is there a second?
No second.
Roll call.
On Jones, aye. On Vaj, aye. On Ross, aye. On Otter, aye. On Noah's, aye. On Coop, aye.
Hard work here in business.
Thank you.
Discussion consideration and possible action regarding ESI's proposal for the repairs of the water tower. I know you've got the written version there, I don't know if Mr. Bob or Bobadella would like to...
Yeah, uh, what we got going on is Friday, tomorrow morning, ESI crew is gonna be out here, and they are going to replace everything that's in the pit up there at the water tower that's causing all those problems. We got three butterfly valves, which that's how we isolate the towers that are stuck open. They're so rusted on that we can't even hit them to sledge them to get them open. So that's part of the problem. And then the altitude valve, which is the valve that controls the level of water in the tower, needs to be rebuilt. It's messed up, so it needs to be rebuilt, so. The cost for just the materials and all that is gonna be four thousand, five hundred and one dollars and eighty-eight cents. And then we have to pay for the technicians that come in and go and do the work, and that's gonna roughly be about thirty-two hundred. They said that, uh...
Thirty-two hundred.
Yeah. They said that, uh, it would take eight hours to do it, so they're gonna be here first day in the morning. That's why we had to have the tower drained down. And, uh, I mean, it's all said and done, it's gonna be a new system, and then we can control everything in that tower, we don't have to worry about bypassing anymore and control the pressure, everything will be controlled and be back to new and square one. Now, I would like to say that ESI is the distributor for plate valves, which is valve system that we got at the pit and at the tower, and he's a professional trainer, and they get into the work and, like I said, they, you know, taking care of it. And then they're also gonna give us, uh, since we've got new staff, for free, they're gonna give us free training, they're gonna have it at their office in the lake of Kansas, and they actually have all the valves, all the regulators right there, and the guys are gonna get hands-on training, how to adjust the valves, how to adjust regulators, how to do monthly maintenance on the equipment, so we will be in the same situation again, and they're gonna give that training for free.
So this will help control the output flow from the tower to the whole town?
I mean, they will only take it, they'll take that and put it all brand new in. And then the old guys, like I said, they're gonna get trained on how to maintain it, and that's gonna be one of the jobs to just keep this state maintenance, keep it tuned.
And then we did bypass around the water tower right now?
Yeah, uh, yeah, the water tower has been offline since two o'clock this afternoon, it's totally drained right now.
Okay.
And as you can tell, we're a month pressure off of twenty-four highway, and I have not heard of any complaints yet of no water.
So once they're done with the project, then you guys will reattach it to the water tower?
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, they cut the old stuff out, reattach the new stuff in. Like I said, I don't know what time they're gonna be here, they said they could be here first day in the morning, I don't know, maybe seven, I don't know, maybe eight, about eight hours, so around two or four that should be done, and then we'll reattach it back online.
Okay, and then once the tower's built, well, citizens won't have water while that's happening, right?
No, they, they got water now.
I know, but I mean, once they reattach it to the tower, will that, that's all, okay. Okay, this ain't sure.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a good point. I mean, water won't be destructive right now. I mean, you know, like I said, just, the tower's been offline since two o'clock this afternoon, it's totally drained down, so we've, we're in office, city, within minutes. And I'd like to say I have not had any complaints so far with the two block, anyway, so I said we get to go, not good.
And you said we have a hundred and twelve thousand and ninety-five?
Yeah, yeah, it looks like total, what's the projected tech price will be about seventy-seven hundred dollars.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. On their way. Okay, uh, final item on there is under the, uh, discussion consideration, possible action regarding hiring of a collection agency. You can see a couple of items in there. Uh, currently there is a outstanding balance on water bills of around almost twenty-three thousand dollars. And there was, uh, proposed by the finance committee that, uh, we look at utilizing collection agency. I'm not sure, personally, I don't know what municipal collections run, but in my industry, if you collect ten percent on your bad debt, you're killing it. Uh, so there's maybe twenty-three hundred dollars to be had, and then you're gonna split that with the company, and you're gonna antagonize the public. Uh, my guess is we'd be better off actively enforcing our shut-off policy. If you don't pay your bill, we shut off your water, and don't let them run up bills that are huge, uh, but that's one hand depending on your, whatever. But, any, any thought?
I agree. Is the mayor on that issue?
What, uh, what's the threshold, like, if somebody has a crazy water, are we talking about one month list, are we talking about six months, or?
One month.
One month?
Roll call.
Can I speak on this?
Uh, oh, you're, you're, you're the finance person.
Can I?
Yeah, yeah, this is Natalie, this is her proposal.
I'm Natalie Cardling, I'm the earnings officer, and, um, I understand that we do use the shut-off policy, and that does, um, help with a lot of our active accounts, but, um, not all of this, but a portion of this, we'll say sixteen thousand dollars of this portion, are people who shut off their water and they have received their final bill and then they move away. And then we lose the ability to have contact with them. Historically, um, it's been four years since the, I guess what you guys would normally do was you would receive a list and you would just write off all these balances. Um, that hasn't been done for four years, so this is a tally of inactive accounts, disconnected accounts, that have, um, are, are just people that have moved to other towns, and some of them are, for instance, landlords who have accounts with us, and, um, their tenants move away, but technically speaking, because they're landlords, they owe us, um, what the tenants didn't pay when they left. So it is collectible. Um, it's just that I don't have the resources and the capability of doing skip tracing and locating these people. I have started doing some soft collections and calling some of these people. Um, I have not had a lot of luck using the phone numbers and the contact information that I have in the system that we collect at the time that they turn on the water. Um, it's not been very fruitful for me. But a collection agency will have resources, um, that I don't have, um, doing skip tracing and locating these people, and also knowing the legal protocols that it's necessary for you know, to retain.
And on the, I noticed, I mean, I don't have to notice, it's there, that meter deposit fund, that's about seventy, seventy, seventy-three thousand pretty consistently. Did we already take, on this here, we've already recouped the deposits on those as well?
Correct, so what, that's just a part of the standard process at the time of closing the account and doing the final bill. Uh, Casey revealed to me that what she does is she sends the final bill to the act, what they're supposed to do is give us a, a bill of where they're moving to, and if they don't, we only have to, have to work with what we have on the system. And we do send two bills to them, but if they simply don't pay the bill, then they will just sit in the waiting, not actively collecting. Some of this stuff, like I said, is very aged, uh, but I did check in with the state statute, and because when you open the water account, it is a, uh, legal binding contract, um, and so we're able to collect on all of these for up to ten years.
Did these folks tell you what their success rate is?
Um, there was only one of them that I was able to get somebody to kind of give me some feedback from another city. Uh, they said that it hasn't been very fruitful for them, um, but, I mean, that's the, as much input as I've received, unfortunately.
If we did okay this, what, what's the time limit that you would turn, turn into the collection agency, what's your time?
So initially, we're gonna have probably about a hundred and thirty-five accounts that all turn over because they are the ones that are in the hundred and twenty days plus category, and then basically I would wait until somebody was past the sixty-day point, and that's only usually about fifteen accounts per month typically that fall into that category. Um, so initially, it's going to be, you know, all of those hundred and thirty-five accounts, um, but after that, it will only be a handful of accounts that we would be doing.
At the sixty-day mark?
I'm sorry?
At the sixty-day mark?
I would say after sixty days that we would be doing that, because it allows her to do two billing cycles of attempting to collect from that asset. And, um, none of the fees are actually charged unless they actually collect, so we're not paying anything for them to attempt.
Looking through these, did you have a preference?
Uh, there was one, IC Systems, that I thought, uh, just the way they presented and my interaction and the, I would say the easy way of getting everything set up, um, online, you get a full one, I like totally interacting with most everybody, it was pretty similar and pricing.
Cause I saw some of these were thirty-five percent, some of them were seventy-five percent of what they collect.
So, so thirty-five percent was kind of like the traditional, um, it escalates once you move into having to contact and enter. Typically, you would only do that on when there's items that are the high, higher amounts, you know, you could not turn it over to a tiny people of a hundred dollars. Um, but we do have a few that run into the, between five hundred to sixteen hundred dollar range, and if those are not the whole, being able to collect by traditional means, then you might want to actually pursue them legally. And so that's when you get that second tier of pricing.
What would you say the average outstanding balance is?
When, if you were to exclude probably the top higher ones, most of the time it's like around a hundred dollars. Um, there's a few that get up into the two and three hundred dollar range, um, it's only the, the ones we've backed us a handful that, that are in the, the top tier of between five hundred and sixteen hundred. There's not a lot up there. So most of the time, I bet it's just, it's the number of the, of, you know, that makes it sixty-seven thousand.
Have you had customers that's been in a, kind of, want to get an appeal, how many that, that were past the sixty days, but then came in and paid?
If they are an active, uh, account and they are here, we're able to use the shut-off process in order to get them to pay. I mean, that, that is a very effective system that we are using, and that means that, you know, in general, we're, we're collecting on any of our active accounts of people that are living here in town. But it's upon finalizing the bill and they move away that we lose that leverage.
Natalie?
Yes.
Of the four that you have listed here, do you have a feel for which one might be the best choice?
The IC Systems.
The top one? Paintball?
Yeah. Uh, my second there is that is the resource solution, I think, is the second one. They're looking at same job. That would be another good one.
So we're looking at about forty to fifty people a year that skip out with an average balance of about a hundred?
If I, yeah, to estimate, yeah. I mean, once we, I think, do the big mass collection, you know, what we have, that we have dealt with for four years, I think that's what we'd be looking at on the, moving forward.
Would we need to alter the existing ordinance, I mean, to put a threshold that say, you know, whatever, I mean, I knew from an attorney's standpoint, we're not gonna, we don't want to do it if it's less than, say, five hundred dollars, but puts on there, because, I mean, there's also an amount of goodwill of citizens that you're not kneecapping somebody who can turn your box. So...
Right, and some of the paths, like in their, they're like, we're not gonna collect anything that is, like, I think one of them's at a hundred, another one's at like twenty-five dollars. Anything below that threshold, we're not gonna miss it, we're not gonna do that service for. Which is, that's where, you know, I would provide this to you guys, you guys would give us the approval of service, that is, not off of a good deal.
Do you know what the current ordinance, what the threshold is?
I don't think that's, to my knowledge, that's not something that we're, that we have in our...
I agree, I don't think there is a minimum threshold where we say we're gonna write off anything below this dollar amount. I'm not aware of that ordinance, at least because I sit here right now.
So is a way we need to clean that up, no matter which way you mail.
Standard practice, I would say that's normal, to, to have something that says any amount of noise about being moved out.
Could we do, uh, maybe like a hybrid, where we send anything that's a year of rawables, just try on that chunk for a while before we institute, like, our going forwards and just see how well they do?
You can, I think you're close to percent drops. You can, I think your license percentage drops the older the account gets, but, good, yes. Getting deals on one bite at a time, see whether it worked or not.
What, if it's fruitful?
I like that idea.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to do anything a year?
Kind of like a trial?
Back, and then, yeah, try that to see how it goes.
Are you gonna name a, a company?
Uh, but, you're right, we missed it, the company.
This to collect? The IC?
Yes, yes.
If you have a second? Home favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll give it a shot.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Next item is our next scheduled meeting will be July 4th, I imagine, hopefully you've made up some plan. So, if you get a motion to cancel that meeting?
No motion. Thank you.
Home favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next, elected official comment?
I wanna thank JD and crew for busting it from west, we should have. I know he's got no sleep. Duty called, you gotta go.
I appreciate Joe for inviting me down in the pit at the thought farm, so I could see what all the battles look like.
I'd like to thank the folks that cared enough to come out and find out for themselves what's really happening, not relying on social media and the words of somebody who knew somebody who knew somebody. Thank you for coming yourself.
With all the blingers, it's a pretty scarce crowd, I think.
Any other? I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn.
It's a motion.
Is that it? Home favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you stand in?